And welcome everyone here tonight. And I would ask everyone to rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Alan Iwers will lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Brunson in the pledge of allegiance.
Right, let us pray. Father in heaven, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to assemble tonight and to conduct the county's business. I pray for the commissioners that you give them wisdom and discernment and understanding into each issue that comes before them tonight. And I, Father, I pray that there will be a civil discourse with our various public hearings and that everything that's done would be pleasing to you. And Father, we thank you for those men and women who are out there as our first responders every day. The world has changed this year and it's become even more difficult to serve in a position of public safety. And I just pray that you place your arms of protection around each one and help them to do their job, Father, but to be protected. We also thank you for those men and women who are serving our nation and protecting us and keeping peace. I pray for their protection as well. We ask these things in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you. Before we get into the agenda, I'd just like to remind everyone this past weekend, we had another near miss and the Lord was looking out for us. We had a storm tracking up the Atlantic on the east coast. And what I witnessed again over the weekend was our emergency management agency, now led by Alex Eaton and well-trained by one Jay Wiggins, very well-trained. Alex had everybody coming together three times a day all weekend, opened up the center on Monday to further be ready to act if that storm took a crazy turn and came my way, which it didn't. But, you know, we had somewhere 30 to 40 different agencies and departments that were meeting every day, three times a day, just to stay ahead of this thing and to be prepared to inform our citizens and lead our citizens through this thing like they ought to be. And I'm impressed with it, I really am. We have something here in Glen County that probably be the envy of a lot of communities. It's well-greased, it runs very well, a lot of dedicated people, they love this community, they're concerned about it, a lot of resources available to help us in the event that hurricane hits. So, we're prepared and we're ready. And I have no doubt if we have another storm head this way, we're gonna go in to just get ready and just stand up to it and meet it head-on and deal with it in the best fashion we possibly can. And I have no doubt that Glen County can do that. So, I just want to thank all those that were a part of it, very few of them's in this room today, but I just want maybe the word to get out there, thank you to everybody involved over the weekend. So, we will get into the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before we address the agenda, I'd like to acknowledge Dr. Murphy. Dr. Murphy reached a milestone today and he shot his age on the golf course. And if he were 90, I guess that wouldn't be too sporty to write that down on the scorecard, but 69 is pretty sporty and we won't mention his age. But, anyway, congratulations, Doc, that's a pretty good accomplishment there.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunson. Yeah, it was truly a miracle. So, we're hoping for continued miracles.
He shared with me every shot. All right, I move to add item number 6.1 to the consent agenda to approve a cancellation of a chip loan security deed for 3504 Lee Street.
Second. Okay, the commissioners have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, I call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, that's 6-4. We have one commissioner that is on the way, that's Mr. Coleman. He did call and say he'd be here shortly.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve consent agenda general business and consent agenda finance with exception of any item that a commissioner may wish to pull for discussion.
Second. Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on consent agenda. Any discussion? I call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Appointments, consider appointing one citizen to serve on the Glen County Board of Tax Assessors. The term begins August 7, 2020 and ends August 6, 2024. Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would like to nominate Mr. Martin McCormick, who's a resident of my district on St. Simon's, very impressive resume, and if I place his name in nomination, please.
Second. Yeah, we just...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Tom Bowden.
Okay. So, we have, we don't need a second, we just make nominations and then we vote on them as they come up.
Okay, and then, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Maureen Miller.
Okay, Maureen Miller, all right. All three have been nominated, so we'll close the floor to nominations and we will vote according to the way they were nominated in the order. First one is Martin McCormick. All those in favor of supporting Martin McCormick, signify by raising your right hand. That is four. And gentlemen, that is a majority of the commission, so we don't need to go any further. Martin McCormick will be serving on the Glen County Board of Tax Assessors beginning August 7, 2020, and that's just around the corner. So...
Tomorrow.
Okay, general business, consider appointing a vice chair for the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. With Miss, got Pam Thompson's name, I didn't know if she was a... Anyhow, the individual is Mr. Jason Counts. And that's who I'm nominating for that. We'd already nominated for the chair last month, so, gentlemen, ask y'all to support that nomination.
What's his name?
Jason Counts. Yeah, works for Dr. Rickers. Yep. That's a good motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the nomination. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. You want to vote on this nomination? Okay. I don't think he was in close enough to understand what we were doing, so that was, since he's here, that'd be six. Bob, did you want to take a vote on Mr. Counts to serve as vice chair on the Impact Fee Advisory Board? Well, you were coming in the door and we'd already discussed it, but we'd nominated and voted on Mr. Counts as the vice chair of the Impact Fee Advisory Board. Did you want to cast a vote on that? Huh? Yeah, yeah, we were already voting when you walked in the door. But... Okay, okay. All right, so you were abstaining. Item 37, consider directing staff how to proceed on excess tax sale funds claimed from Mary Johnson in the amount of $22,072 for 2919 Demery Road, St. Simon's Island. Will?
Good afternoon, commissioners. This item went to the Finance Committee with a request to provide direction to staff on how to present, how to proceed with this claim. Very briefly, we received a claim from Ms. Johnson. She submitted our normal affidavit, which states that they are the person who's entitled to the funds. Our normal process is to also require a title opinion from an attorney, where the attorney certifies they've searched the title and that they have determined that the person making the claim is the person who's entitled to the funds under the law. Ms. Johnson has asked that we not make that requirement in this case. She doesn't feel like she needs to spend the money on an attorney in order to process the claim. She also pointed out that back in 2014, the county had received some right-of-way from her as part of a transaction that involved her and a developer of the townhouses there on Demery Road. We did not have a copy of the title search from that transaction. We were sort of a small part of a larger transaction that involved her and the developer, and we got some right-of-way during that. The Finance Committee forwarded it to you without a recommendation, and in the interim, we reached out to Ms. Johnson and she was able to, her attorney during that time was Bill Ligon, oh, William Ligon. And Mr. Ligon sent us the title search that he had performed at that time, which we reviewed. According to the title search that was performed in 2013, Ms. Johnson and her husband are the owners of the property and there were no liens or encumbrances on the property at the time. I updated the title search from that date, did not find any other conveyances or liens or encumbrances. The one caveat I will put is that this was not a 50-year title search that they did. They only did a title search back to the time that the Johnsons acquired the property in 2002. So, it was a title search from 2002 to 2013. A normal title search, when you're closing on a property, is a 50-year title search. But, that's the update we have since the Finance Committee.
Okay, Will, thank you. Commissioners, y'all have any questions of the attorney?
Mr. Worley, give me, give me the dates again, the earlier dates, was it, you say 2002?
Yes, sir. So, according to the title search that was provided to us, Johnsons acquired the property in 2002. The title search was performed in 2013, June of 2013.
And that was when another transaction was taking place, right?
Correct. That was, I guess, the Johnsons and the developer who developed those townhouses there exchanged some property interests, I think. The county also got some right-of-way to widen Demery Road there as well. So, I guess that was the purpose of that title search at the time. I searched forward from 2013 to the date of this tax sale, which was February of 2019, to determine if anything had happened in the interim, and there were no property records showing any kind of liens or conveyances from that point.
And in 2002, is that when they acquired the property?
According to the title search that was given to us, yes.
So, there was probably a title search at that point to give them clear title to obtain?
I would presume so, but I don't know.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation that we go ahead and approve this as to proceed with the excess sales tax funds claim from Mary Johnson in the amount of $22,017, $72, I'm sorry, for the 2919 Demery Road, St. Simon's Island.
Okay, there's a motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, we have a motion. Anyone want to second the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second, I'll second the motion for discussion. The problem I have with this, refunding this money, is like so many things we do, what is the precedent that we set here? Are we going to waive a clean title search for everybody else? And if we waive that 50-year title search, which is what we require from Ms. Johnson, what do we do to the next person? Well, what are you talking about, $300 or $400? I mean, it's not an onerous amount of money.
In our experience, when we order them, they're, yeah, somewhere between $300 to $500 typically.
Yeah.
So, time is a factor as well, you know. Again, we don't do a high volume, but usually when we request a title search, it's anywhere from two to four weeks before they can do one.
So, and there are some other options, remanding this to a superior court judge, which is going to take a lot of time and expense, and that doesn't seem like a very good option.
Yes, sir.
It just seems like to me that the cleanest way to do this and protect the county and to protect the precedent that this would set would be to go ahead and require her to spend the $400 to get her $22,000. That's what I'd do. Anyway, that's, that's my, those are my only comments.
Yeah, and I remembered the Finance Committee when this came up, that the idea was to give her a little extra time to try to find the title search she had when she bought the property, but it appears that it's not a complete title search. So, in my mind, when we passed it on to the Board of Commissioners, it was in the hope that that information be found, but if not, and I would agree with Commissioner Brunson, we don't want to set the precedence of doing this.
Yeah, I would just like to say, I agree with Commissioner Brunson that it would establish that, you know, an untenable precedent, but at the same time, I'm very sympathetic that every time, you know, I've been involved in any property transaction, it seems like, you know, you get these title searches to the point of absurdity, but it is, in fact, the protocol you go through. You know, one would assume if they bought this property in 2002, the title was clear at that time, and, you know, why repeat the process? And I am very sympathetic, but when you look at the volume of dollars in the transaction and the minimal amount to assure everybody, including the county, that the title is, in fact, clear, I come down on the side of getting the search, as you do, Commissioner Brunson.
And I would just add that it would appear to me that when it seems fairly obvious, as this is, and she supplied a title search back to 2002, that she is the clear and evident owner of the property, I don't know why we need to make it more onerous than it has to be to be able to provide some ease of going through Glen County government. So, for that reason, I made the nomination.
Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion on the table, on the floor and a second. I'll call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That's one. All those opposed, signify by raising your right hand. That is five. And we have one abstaining, okay, due to conflict. So, one, five, and one. Okay. Item 38, consider proving the current roundabout concept to move forward to the final design and bid of the Kingsway and Frederica Road intersection project. Mr. Austin?
Do we need a motion on denying that, so we did, we did it by...
Commissioners, the motion fails, the action fails, so it doesn't get approved. You don't have to deny that.
Well, I mean, there's four alternatives, so we voted on one, and so how do we know which of the three are you going to do? I mean, I know which one I'm voting for, but...
If there's another alternative the board wants to pursue, and, you know, that's certainly the board's prerogative to make another motion.
Well, I think, I think to clean it up, we ought to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if that's all right with you, and let's have a formal vote so we can make sure that we've given clear direction. And under that, I would move that we'd have staff order title search and make determination as to the rightful party or parties entitled to the funds, the cost of title search, $300 to $500, would come from the overage proceeds.
There's motion.
Commissioners, I would point out that that's different than our normal procedure. Our normal procedure is to have the claimant provide a title opinion from an attorney, and that title... that title, that attorney would have done the title opinion or done the title search We're good either way, but we just, we do need direction from y'all, I think.
Well, we had a motion, but we don't have a second, so the motion dies for lack of a second. Anyone want to make a, you want to give us an idea what kind of motion we need?
I think, Commissioners, if you just want to direct staff to require the applicant to follow the normal procedure, that would give us the direction we need.
Okay. You okay with that, Aaron? Okay. Commissioners? You want to make that to a motion? Commissioner Booker?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we direct the staff to proceed in the regards to the title search and overage from Ms. Johnson as normally, as normal procedures dictate.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is six, four, and Commissioner Booker, you abstain again for the same reason.
I didn't vote.
Oh, oh, you didn't vote? Okay. All right, there's opposed, okay, one. So it's five, one, and one. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Neal. Commissioner Austin, Commissioner, Director Austin. One more time.
Good, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So just to update you on where we were, I mean, we had this discussion at the last work session where you looked at a concept drawing of a roundabout. We're getting really close to where we want this thing, and Mr. Chairman, you gave me some direction to go back and talk to Sea Island and talk to the designers, because we were just trying to move it a few feet in a certain direction to save a couple of trees. So we met with the designer, we had a tree guy come up, Mr. Lippi, who works on occasion for us from St. Augustine. He came up, looked at the two trees, and the designer went back, and he looks like, he thinks that he, he believes that he's able, now, this is a concept, the concept is a horizontal, it's not a vertical, it's a horizontal, okay? And so he thinks he can move it, okay, to save those two trees, and it, Mr., my traffic engineer, Ben Pierce, is satisfied because we're elongating one of the little islands to keep people from turning around that area. So we have a consensus between the Public Works Department, the designer, and Sea Island, that the roundabout is in the correct place, they all agree that this is a good place. I call it the, the leave the two trees, the move the three trees method, okay, because there are a couple of concepts out there. So basically, we're going to leave two trees in place, Sea Island is going to move three trees. And that's the concept that we'd like for you all to approve so that we can go forward and design that. Now, this is a single-lane roundabout, but it has four single lanes coming into it, single lanes from, single lane of traffic coming from Kingsway on either side, and single lanes coming from Retreat and Frederica, and that's why it's a single-lane roundabout. They believe, the, the smart transportation engineers studied this and believe that the level of service, this is the best solution for the highest level of service, and when they call that level of service, that's a car going from one side of the intersection to the other that you can get for an intersection design, and of course, it's a roundabout, which, you know, checks the blocks off as far as safety, pollution, amount of, amount of movement of vehicles for the amount of square foot of asphalt you put down and all that stuff. So we would like to move forward in two directions. One is an agreement that this is the concept that we want to go for with, and two, the other thing we'll be going forward with is a MOU with Sea Island, because Sea Island has agreed to move the three trees, design the landscaping in the roundabout, and maintain the landscaping in the roundabout. And so that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Dave. Commissioners, have any questions? Dave?
Maybe not a question, but, but a few comments. We've been at this for over two years. You and I have been working hand in glove with this. We, we actually got together, and because of other issues, we created a two-intersection improvement, where we put in turning lanes and signalization where traffic on green lights could flow both directions on Kingsway, et cetera, et cetera, and that came in at a nice number that, that met with this lost budget. From, from the inception, I've told you, I, you know, my gut tells me, living right there, that a single lane is vastly undersized, and I know your experts disagree with me, and that's fine, I'm, I'm okay with that, but when you say it's a single lane and, and four single-lane roads come in, that's, maybe, maybe one could question that. When you look at the two-lane roundabout at Demery and Frederica, and you look at Frederica Road going north, which is a single-lane road, but then when it gets to the roundabout, there's a turning lane to the left, same way with Frederica coming south, that just before the CVS, there's a turning lane that comes out, so that was a single-lane road, and the same can be said of Demery. They all have turning lanes that come out just before they get to the roundabout, and this is the same way. There's a right-hand turning lane and, from Kingsway going sort of southeast into the village that turns into a lodge. As you leave the village, there's a turning lane that goes north on Frederica, and likewise, as you come down Frederica, there's a turning lane that goes northwest on Kingsway, leaving the village, and same coming out of the lodge. So, you know, I, I know, I know why, you know, the single lane seems to be the, the most acceptable, it's because there's not enough land to build a two-lane roundabout, because it would encroach upon airport property, and that seems to be a sacrosanct piece of property, and I just, I, I feel like, you know, it could vote six to one against what I'm saying, and I'm fine with that, but two years from now, when there are jam-ups on Sunday afternoon, or on the holidays, or on the weekend beach traffic, I don't want to have Murphy's name associated with this, and so, you know, that's, that's just the way I look at it. I drive by there every day, I see the backup of cars. This is not Lawrence Road and Frederica, where you have basically three roads coming in there. You know, this is, this is major traffic flow with major events that go on at the lodge at Sea Island, and I think this is just grossly undersized, not to mention the cost. And, you know, as you and I have discussed many times before, you know, we can, we can talk about costs, and we can make cost estimates, but until we get the bids back, we have no idea what the cost might be to us. So I've said my piece. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to comment. Hold on, hold on a minute, Bob. So have we looked at the two, two-lane at all?
Yes, sir, we have looked at the two-lane. This is the first I've heard that the reason that we're not doing a two-lane is because of the airport. They had a two-lane design, but they don't believe that a two-lane is necessary. Two-lane adds to confusion, okay, and they didn't believe that was necessary. Now, I can get the, I've got the designer, I can get him on my telephone, and we can, and he can design, he can discuss that into more detail, but that's, that's the bottom line.
And so you all are comfortable that this won't, this will have the proper-
We're comfortable in this form.
Yeah, the traffic flow?
Yes, sir.
With the amount of traffic that comes?
Yes, sir.
From, from all of these-
Well, it's backed up now. I mean, it was backed up this morning when I drove by, at 9:30, or 10, 10:30.
I'd like to, to comment along with Commissioner Murphy here. I don't think there's any question about that being probably one of the top three intersections on the island, and, and moving the traffic through there as quickly as possible is our main objective. Excuse me. And, you know, I'm, everybody that's ever been through there, especially here lately, during the summer months and all, you got traffic backed up three ways at least, not necessarily down Retreat Road, but the other three approaches to that intersection right there. You got 30, 40, 50 cars in a lot, a lot of cases, and all of them waiting, so it, it just seems to me that with the questions being asked, you might want to get somebody to take a second look at it, even a third look if necessary, to, to just make sure we've got all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, because that's, that's a, it's not going to get any better right there. And if we got another two and a half inches of space that we can use, I would, I would certainly recommend that we try to work that in, and if, at all possible, making it a little bit larger, that, now, is, this one got a center hub in it, like?
Yes, sir.
All of them?
Yeah, I believe it's about 150 feet across. I mean, it's a, it's a large roundabout, it's just one lane, okay? So, I mean, there's space as the people come in, it creates, you know, a roundabout works, it creates space so that, so that people can zipper in to those things. Now, it has been studied two or three times, but, you know, I'm here to do whatever the Commission wants. You want me to go back and study it? You know, we've, we've, we have designed an intersection already, now we're going to design another one. Whatever the Commission wants to do, that's what we'll, that's what Public Works will do.
Well, I mean, any chance you could shrink the hub and, and, and give you more space that way? I just know the hub down at, at the other end is, you know, extremely small compared to this.
Well, you know, they can shrink the hub, but they, when they shrink the hub, that affects the actual flow of traffic, I believe. They, they, they like it to be a certain size so that it creates those spaces in the, around as, so that other cars can zipper in. So, uh-
I guess that'd make the turn tighter, too, wouldn't it?
Now, when you get into two lanes, you get to that decision point where, am I in this lane, or am I in that lane, and we have that kind of confusion up at the other roundabout at Demery and Frederica, where we have situations where people don't know which lane they should be in. So the actual, the single-lane one actually functions simpler and easier, and we've got, right now, we've got the detour running through the roundabout at Ocean and East Beach, and there are a lot of cars blowing through that roundabout right now, and they're just, I think I was by there today, and there was practically a car all the way around that roundabout, as it was just moving traffic, so.
I'm, I'm back to what you just said a minute ago. I, I, I still have a hard time sometimes knowing which lane I'm in and which way I'm going in one of those.
But we, we still have a problem at Demery and Frederica, and the northbound from Demery, westbound, eastbound Demery going northbound on Frederica, and some people wanting to go left there in the right lane, so.
About the only thing positive you can say about that is you don't have to worry about anybody coming up on your outside, or vice versa.
That's correct.
If you've got one lane.
One lane. You look, you look one way, and you go. You look one way, and you go. So it's a simplified, simplified method, and it decreases the amount of collision points and all that other good things.
Am I correct?
That's my comment.
You said you've looked at it two to three different times, is that correct? And we've looked at traffic counts going through there, and you've had the traffic engineer look at it, and they have all signed off on it, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Was there any concern at, at all about it handling the traffic that we currently have?
No, sir.
What about future growth?
Well, they do, they do a growth pattern. Now, this, some folks will go back to the PON study and say, well, it was done erroneously or whatever, but the PON study figured out a growth pattern of a certain percentage for a certain year, and they figured out a, I mean, this is the solution, the 2035 solution. This is the solution for traffic to that, to that, that growth pattern. But however, when you look down in that area of the island, you wonder what the growth pattern's going to be down there, because there's not a lot of, other than rebuilding and maybe building up a little bit, there's not a lot of empty space down there.
So this is a 15 to 20-year for sure, maybe even longer. I know that we've spent a lot of time and effort on, on designing this, and, and I appreciate the fact that we've gone back two and three times to the engineer to get the information and verify it. I don't know how many more Is we can dot and Ts we can cross, we either accept it or we don't.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the current roundabout concept and move forward to final design and bid.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? I'll call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is six, four, and there's opposed, same, that is one against. And never will anyone speak Commissioner Murphy's name in the same breath for that roundabout.
Yeah, I think, I think Brunson's name on it would be fine. The Bill Brun, not Trey, Bill Brunson Roundabout.
Yeah.
No, Dave Austin Roundabout.
The Bill Brunson, Dave Austin Roundabout.
Thank you, thank you.
That's the Bill Brunson, Bob Coleman Roundabout. So, thank you, Dave. There's no way we can have an executive session, because I don't think we could. You, you don't, you, do you want to have an executive session now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, we're going to have to make it quick. Okay.
We've adjourned the executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Okay. We've got a motion, second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. We adjourned the executive session.
Second, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, move. We approve the minutes of the June 23, 2020. Discussion of personnel and potential litigation.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed? Are we unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, move. We come out of the executive session. I thought we'd already done that. But we did.
Huh? Did we?
We already came out of the executive session and voted on it.
I was going to do it twice to get it behind us. Okay, thank you.
Well, it's good. It's always good to come out of the executive session.
Okay. We are out of executive session, all right. I have adjourned. I am convening the six o'clock meeting. And want to welcome everyone here. We said invocation, pledged allegiance at the first session. So we're dispensed with that. On the agenda, we had one gentleman signed up to public speak, and he has since withdrawn his request to speak, so we're dispensed with that. So. Public hearing, we're going to move on to the... Let me... Huh?
Mr. Smith, if you'd ask to be blocked from viewing, would you like to take it down?
Yeah, why don't we take it down if we need it? Okay? Thank you, Jay. Before we get into the agenda. You know, we have some, a lot of interest in the items on the agenda here tonight. And because of COVID, we want to stress that we want to practice social distancing. And that's very difficult in this old courthouse, we understand. I know we have some overflow out in the atrium. And what we're going to do is try to... After each item is heard, we're going to take a five-minute break. And let those that want to leave, if you don't want to stick around for the next item, if you can give your time to leave and give other people time to come in. And try to make it work for everybody. But it is a very difficult situation. This is the first time this board has met in this courthouse in a number of months. And so it's kind of a trial and error, but we think we can get it done. And with your cooperation, we will get it done. So thank you all. Okay, public hearing, abandonment. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position at the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item one, AB 4149, consider the abandonment of a portion of the unopened alley right away in Block Five in the Eldorado subdivision, adjacent to 210 Menendez Avenue. Jim Bishop is agent for 1317 Demery LLC owners. Mr. Bishop. Are you, are you asking for a deferment tonight?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. We spoke with the engineer, Paul Andrews, this afternoon. It's clear we need to, some things that we need to further study and clarify. And so we thought it best to postpone it. We asked for a deferment of this by, by the county commission respectfully. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, we're asking to defer.
Mr. Chairman, I think you should find out how many people were here to speak to this issue. And we'll have to come back to another meeting. It would be fair to ask for a show of hands, how many people were here to speak to this issue?
Thank you, Patty. Commissioners, we have a request to defer.
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer this public hearing item to the regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on September 3, 2020.
Second. Commissioner, I have a motion and a second. I'll call the motion. All those in favor deferring, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Smith, we don't know what's going to come back to us. They could change, you know, we could hear it all night long, and it may be totally different when, if it ever comes back. It may never come back. So I understand where you're coming from, I do. But, but we go through this thing here tonight, and when they come back, it may be something totally different. They may never come back.
Mr. Bishop and the applicant might have learned from the comments of people who are against this.
I get it.
Might have learned. He doesn't want to learn. Thank you.
I get it. I get it. I get it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing, land use, item two. Pardon? Yeah, if there's anyone that was here just for that item, if you want to... Okay. If you don't want to leave. All right, public hearing, land use. Item two. ZM 4299, St. Simon's Art Museum. Consider a request to rezon property located at 513 Beachview Drive, 315 15th Street, 108, 118, 124, 130, and 140, Pier Village Market, 300, 308, and 310, Mallory Street, and 508, Oglethorpe Avenue, from village mixed-use VMU and Island Preservation District IP to Plan Development District PD and Island Preservation Design Review District IP. The applicant proposes to construct a 20,000-square-foot art museum. Parcel IDs 04-04653, 04-04652, 04-10230, 04-11659, 04-07017. James Bishop, agent for Sandy Vacation LLC owner. Stephanie.
Good evening, commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. This is ZM 4299, St. Simon's Art Museum Rezon. So this is the property where the star is located. It's in the St. Simon's Village area. The property consists of several different parcels between Mallory Street, Beachview, 15th Street, and Oglethorpe. So the property is currently where the Pier Village kiosks are, as well as a commercial building where Dutchman's Design is, and then there's a single-family home. So the applicants are proposing to demolish all the structures that are currently on the parcels. They did look at trying to incorporate some of those into the design, but they are planning to, they have applied to demolish those and construct a new 20,000-square-foot art museum building. So just a few things on this. They are proposing to rezone from VMU and Island Preservation Design overlay to Plan Development and Island Preservation overlay. So they plan to retain the property in the Village Preservation, Island Preservation area. So primarily because the Plan Development proposal does include several different modifications to the design that would potentially need different variances, that was primarily the reason behind going the PD route. Also, the property in total is under three acres. So all PDs, according to the code, that are under three acres do require a site plan to be part of it. So your decision tonight also includes a site plan, as well as the, the Plan Development text. So the art museum definition. Currently, the village mixed-use does define, or does include art gallery as a, as a use that's allowed in VMU. Staff's interpretation has been that an art gallery and an art museum are synonymous. However, there are definitely different interpretations of what an art gallery or art museum is. And so because the, the applicants want to have absolute assurity that the art museum use is allowed by code and that there isn't any discrepancies in the future when they go to build, they, that's another reason behind the PD text is so that the art museum is specifically used allowed, instead of saying an art gallery and then being subject to an interpretation in the future. So primarily the uses that they are proposing in the PD text, some of the existing VMU uses will be retained. They are proposing to eliminate some of the uses that are currently allowed in VMU. So some of the uses that are currently allowed in VMU that will no longer be allowed in the PD if approved is a bait and/or fishing tackle supply store, bicycle repair, rental or sales shop, grocery store, hardware store, package liquor and wine store, pharmacy, apothecary, or drugstore, and residential use lawfully existing. And the parking standards, that is one of the significant changes with the PD as well. So in the proposed PD, they are looking at doing a one space per 400 square feet of museum floor area that's open to the public. And that would be for the art museum. Currently, under the current zoning of VMU, well, VMU and also our current standards for accessory uses for parking, a museum would require one space per 70 square feet of floor area that's open to the public. So it's a significant difference. They did take a look at several other cities with museums and looked at their parking standards, and that is how they, they came to this one space for 100. And that being said, they're also looking for a flexible parking arrangement by allowing what's existing on the site. Well, not really the, the spaces existing on the site, but basically what would be required for the uses that are currently on site, kind of crediting towards that. So definitely by approving this, there's definitely a flexible parking arrangement that they are requesting with this. Also with the buffers, the current, the PD text is proposed, is proposing a three-foot-wide buffer along the public rights of way. If this project came in under VMU zoning and the current standards, there would be a 10-foot-wide buffer, which is a type E, that would be allowed. So what they're trying to do here is just get a little closer to what's currently out there. Most of those buildings in the village are either at, built to the property lines or very close to the property line. So this would allow their design to mimic more closely what is currently developed in the village. And then there's also some standards for vision clearance at street intersections. The proposed PD text would eliminate those restrictions on corner lots. And then the current zoning does, does require 25-foot vision clearance at intersections. So this is a summary of what the PD text does propose. So this is the comprehensive plan. It is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. They do show it as neighborhood commercial, and what they're planning to do is in compliance with that. So this is a survey of the current property. This is their plan for demolition. And of note, the demolition and the actual design of the building is, is subject still to Islands Preservation Commission review. That was deferred to their, the August 18 IPC meeting. So the demolition is still, will still be under review and reviewed on August 18 by the IPC. And this is their site plan. This is their landscape plan. So that's landscape entry plan, excuse me. And then this is their, their conceptual elevation and conceptual floor plan. This is their irrigation plan, which is a requirement of the Village Preservation. And then the Planning Commission action. So at their special call meeting on July 21 of 2020, the IPC held a public hearing on this application. And their, their final vote was 4-2. They had a first vote that was 3-3. One member was recused. And then they took a second vote that was, ended up being a 4-2 vote. So Commissioners Duncan and Willis opposed, and Commissioner Torres had recused himself. And they did, the IPC did vote in favor recommending to the Board of Commissioners approval of the zoning decision with the condition that the PD is limited to only the art museum use. So currently in the PD text, a number of other uses would be allowed. And the IPC's recommendation is to only allow the art museum use and no other uses. And so that being said, if this was approved in this manner, if there was ever going to be another use on this site, they would have to come back through this process and amend the PD text to allow other uses. So your possible actions tonight. The first action would be mirroring the IPC's recommendation that it would be limited to only the art museum use. The second option is the PD text, including the site plan and tree plan, that was presented on July 21st to the IPC. And that is the PD text that's in your packet that does include the other uses in addition to art museum. And then a third option is approve it with additional modifications. You can also continue it, continue this application to another date, or you could remand the application back to the IPC or deny the zoning decision. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant team is here this evening as well.
Okay, Steffi, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions for Steffi? She steps out of the way. Okay, Steffi, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, and as many of y'all know, we allocate 30 minutes for each side, those for and those against. I'm going to ask for a show of hands. How many are here tonight that want to speak against? Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. Those that are for, how many are here tonight that wants to speak in favor? Okay, all right, very well. Thank you all. We're going to start off with those that are against. You have five minutes. And when you come up to the podium, please state your name for the record. And so looks like Mr. Ragsdale, you're going to come on up.
Sorry if I take this down while I'm this far away. George Ragsdale, I live in St. Simon's. I don't know what the applicant's going to present tonight. I've seen the renderings that they've got up here on the easels. The issue before you, the only issue before you tonight, is not whether you like the design of the museum, not whether you like a museum. Both staff and the county attorney's office have said that the art museum is permissible under the current zoning. The only reason for rezoning this property would be if the owner is not able to use the property in the way that they desire to use it under the current zoning. And that's been demonstrated again by both staff and county attorney's office that the current zoning allows them to build a museum. The question tonight is not whether you like the idea of a museum, whether you like the design, the color, the size, or anything else. That's not what this is about. This is strictly a rezoning question. One of the reasons that the Planning Commission made the recommendation that they did is because we got boxed in in a requirement that we had to do something within 60 days because we were not able to have a, a public hearing within the 60-day requirement of the ordinance due to the pandemic. One of the fallacies, I think, with what we're doing tonight is it, it seems that the site plan is, is going to be de facto, if the rezoning is approved, the site plan will be de facto improved. The Planning Commission, per se, did not really review the site plan. We discussed the rezoning. The site plan should be a separate issue. The fact that it's under three acres means that they have to present a site plan, but it should not be a de facto approval of the site plan if the rezoning is approved. But at the end of the day, there's no reason to approve the rezoning. Ms. Leaf referred to the comprehensive plan and said this area was designated a neighborhood commercial. The comprehensive plan also, in its work plan, indicated that PD texts were something that we wanted to see go away. They've been abused over the years. The ones that are out there will be grandfathered, but it was proposed in the comprehensive plan that the PD text no longer be used. And in fact, and all the work that's been done with the Envision-Glynn rewrite of the ordinances and the TSW Consulting Group has indicated that doing away with PD text amendments going forward is something that is a good idea for the island. To the best of my knowledge, there's never been a, an override of the Village Preservation District in the island since it was created. Island preservation will still apply. In either case, the applicant has agreed to that. That'll speak to the design. But the Village Preservation District is there for a reason. It's there to protect the character of the entire village. It's there to protect the character of the entire village. The biggest risk I see by approving a PD text amendment here is the future applications for PD text amendments that could come in from someone else, and the precedent it would set, that would make it very difficult for you to say no. Imagine somebody coming in and deciding that they want to create something all the way from Roberta's down to Blue Water and buy all that property and create a PD text, and they come to you and say, that's what we want. It would be hard for you to say no if you say yes tonight. So again, the issue, the question on the table is not whether you like a museum. The question on the table is whether the applicant needs a rezoning in order to be able to implement what they want to do with the property.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me, next person up that wants to speak against the application. State your name for the record, please.
My name's Avery Smith, but can I pass this down the line? Hello, everyone. My name is Avery Smith, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak today. My family has owned and operated Roberta's by the Sea in the Pier Village for five generations. My great-great-grandmother, Roberta, opened this store in 1946, almost 74 years ago. Roberta sits on the corner of Mallory and Butler. Almost every day, we see visitors struggle to find a parking space, fail to find one, then illegally park in the street. We have visitors come into the store to ask if they can park in the alley. We have cops ask if we know who's parked there so they can notify them to move their vehicles. And we see delivery trucks trapped behind the stores. Sorry, lost my spot. Trapped behind the stores, blocked in by illegally parked cars. We are worried that having an event venue like the museum built in the very center of the village will exasperate the existing parking crisis. Section 709 to the zoning ordinance of Glen County was created specifically to protect the historical and architectural character of the village area on St. Simons Island and to protect existing property values from incompatible architectural and landscape designs. Why are we even considering rezoning? This museum, as it has been proposed, will have major impacts on the village, the existing businesses, and the visitors' experiences. I have handed a list of merchants that oppose the zoning change to each of the commissioners. This list includes 13 merchants with a total of 15 different businesses. It is important that all of these are taken into consideration and that we do not make a rushed decision. I believe this should be deferred back to the IPC and made to comply with the existing ordinance. Thank you for your time.
My name's Jeff Kilgore, and I hope you know that almost every time I ever come up here to speak to you, it's with a specific request that you observe, enforce, and follow your own ordinances. That's why I'm here tonight. As has already been pointed out, there is no required change in zoning to put a museum in the village. My objective is to convince you that you must observe your ordinance. I attempt that at the IPC over and over, and it never seems to work. And let me just read to you. I think I'm going to read to you. A piece of paper that somebody took from me. But basically, the island preservation, as Mr. Ragsdale has pointed out, was designed to preserve the character of the village, and this application is a request to rezone property from the village mixed use to a PD text. There's no need for this. If you have studied the application, the new PD text would allow for a number of permitted uses, such as a parking garage, parking lot, a private club, a hotel motel, and a bed and breakfast. Back in February, before the Wuhan virus changed our lives, I sat through a sermon at the First Baptist Church with a couple of you, and our pastor made a presentation from Galatians, chapter 1, verse 10, and it's, the subject is people pleasers versus servants of Christ. When you assume this position, you took an oath. You put your hand on a Bible. People pleasers have an inordinate desire to make everybody happy. Servants of Christ have an all-consuming passion to please God and to stay true to your oath. People pleasers pretend to serve God when they are really working to serve themselves. In situations like this, people pleasers give in. They cave under pressure. Dr. Winford at the First Baptist Church had a line in that sermon that I recall, said, "When a Christian has a habit of denying with his life what he affirms with his lips, he can do all sorts of damage to his community." Please adhere to your oath. Please respect your own ordinances. One of you, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but has been very vocal about the abuse of plan development text in the zoning code over the years. I request that you refer this matter back to the Island Planning Commission without an approval of the rezoning and allow them to reconsider this matter and to deal with the design elements and the other items that are objectionable. Historically, I have been in countless IPC meetings where various members of the IPC would admonish the applicant. You knew what the zoning was when you bought the property. Don't come up here now and ask for us to prevent something that's going to be built next door to you. You should have known, and you should have made the decision when you made the acquisition. And it's been stated over and over again. Now, the hypocrisy of the people pleasers versus the servants of God is what you may hear tonight from someone who has voiced that admonition to a number of applicants at the IPC. And so don't forget that the people at the IPC have said over and over to applicants, don't come in here and ask for a change in a blocking or zoning or something that you don't want because you should have done it when you bought the property. Thank you very much.
Good evening and thank you. My name is John Dow, and I have a unique perspective. I have observed and seen this kind of show before during my nine years on the Island Planning Commission. My question is not yes or no, but why? The zoning exists today. The zoning, village mixed use goes back to when Commissioner Brunson and I were both chairmans of our respective zoning commissions. The applicant here tonight and his agent are very knowledgeable and experienced in real estate. You don't buy this kind of property and then afterwards find out what and if you can do something with it. This is not a case of hardship. This is a case of privilege. And I have to say, during my nine years on the IPC, never did we have one application for a PD text. Two, to my knowledge, we never had a request for a variance. In fact... Are you going to live?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Okay. Don't die on my watch, pal. Or maybe. In fact, the IPC was charged with the responsibility of protecting the ambiance of the village. Color, texture, signage, door, window fronts were all within our purview, and all of them we dealt with subjectively. There was not a written ordinance specifying what colors are acceptable or not. You have an ordinance today, right now, village mixed use, that's not subjective. It's very objective. It's paint by the numbers. It either fits or it doesn't fit. We denied, and small business people, because of color, texture, we just didn't think it fit, and they abided by it. They accepted the fact that a body was going to try to enforce this eclectic, very special area next to the beach, the pier in the village, or the most tourist destinations. This isn't touristy. This is, and I think it's interesting, it wasn't until this afternoon that the public had a chance to see what was proposed. I know for a fact, and you guys have endured an awful lot and a lot of time behind the scenes, seeing things that we've never seen, hearing things we've never heard. I thank you for being open-minded and objective in hearing us tonight. Bear with me. Normally, a PD is used to enhance zoning, not circumvent zoning. And in a lot of cases, the PD is used because there isn't something exactly fitting within the intent of the ordinance. This is clear. This is undeniable. If this PD is approved, and I want, this is a hypothetical, but I want this commission to think through this, and I'd like the county attorney to advise you, if you approve this, then you will put yourself or subsequent commissioners in a position, and I'm going to use extremes, a George Soros or Donald Trump buying Roberta's to Blue Water and coming to you with their own PD text, wanting to do whatever inside. And you can imagine, both of those, they're pretty radical. I want to see, and I'd like the county attorney to advise you, how do you deny it? There's no rules. It's like an open canvas. Write what you want. If you approve this tonight, eliminate the village mixed use. Doesn't make sense. Why should one person acquire a large piece of real estate and then be able to make his own rules? Why not let someone that buys Roberta's, if it ever goes for sale, to come in here and say, this is what I want, and it doesn't comply with the village mixed use? If you join a club, Sea Island or whatever, when you join or when you buy in, you have a set of rules and regulations, and they don't compromise them. That's the rules. We have someone today that knew going in what the rules were, but it wasn't good enough. They want their own rules. And forget all this about landscaping and architect. That's not the issue. The issue is, do we enforce something for small businesses and the entire population of people that want to come into our community, or do we acquiesce to privilege? And I'm going to tell you something, in my nine years on the commission, we never did it.
You have six minutes.
Six minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. The applicant agent...
I'm sorry.
Are you doing it on purpose, buddy?
Mr. Dow, you're taking away from somebody else's time.
All right, well, let me, if someone else wants to speak and will grant me some time, I'd appreciate it. The applicant and his agent, we all know that have been around here for a while, understand how it works. You're going to hear from people saying what a good thing it is, what a positive thing it is, how the village supports it. I'm going to tell you something, because of who's involved, there are a lot of people who have opinions that wouldn't dare speak out, and I've spoken to a couple of them. They want to stay out of it. Someone didn't know it.
Thank you, sir.
All I want to say is, enforce the ordinance and don't acquiesce to the privilege. Thank you.
Next speaker, want to come up? Okay. Anyone else want to come up and speak? Come on up.
My name is Dave Parsons. I'm a resident in St. Simons. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you this evening about the rezoning proposal. You know, some of the other speakers have brought up many of my key points, and I'm going to reiterate some of those, but to our last speaker's point, I do want to emphasize, I've talked to a lot of people. I've talked to a lot of neighbors, locals, and even some of the guests that come into our town. And realistically, some of the feedback, and I'm just going to share some of the verbatims that I continually hear, some of the people have taken a very defeatist attitude that no matter if they like it or not, that nothing's going to change, that no one listens to what they want. They also take the approach that the developer has just got too fat of a wallet, and they have no chance. They've taken that attitude. Otherwise, we'd probably have a whole lot more people here tonight. But the general tones that I hear is, I don't want it, it does not fit the village, which I think everybody's agreed on that so far. Another is, we've got way too much traffic, there's not enough parking spaces, and if you spend any time downtown, you probably know that too is a fact. But the biggest point, and again, it has been made a couple of other times, why are we even talking about rezoning? And that is the big logical question here. Me, when all of this started, I was genuinely perplexed as to why we're even having this conversation, why we're even here tonight. This situation, this issue, has gotten way too far down the train tracks and should not have even been here tonight. Now, a little bit of background, just give you a little personal background. I'm relatively new to the island. My wife and I moved here from the northern corridor of Atlanta, as probably half of the island did, from Orozville-Alpharetta area. We were trying to get away from some things. Number one, as no surprises, the traffic issue in Atlanta was just a horrific situation on a daily basis. Number two, the good old boy system in the northern corridor is alive and well. We wanted to get away from that. And then lastly, and something that really was close to me, was the over-the-top, gaudy representation of money and power. We just wanted to get away from all that, and that's why we came here. We actually looked everywhere, from Charleston area all the way down to St. Augustine and even over in the west part of Florida, the Panhandle. We took an impromptu vacation here in St. Simons, and my wife and I were having breakfast at Palmer's, and we just kind of looked at each other. It was raining outside. We just looked at each other and said, this is it. This is where we want to end up. And we felt that it was the right place. We looked at it from a standpoint of community. We looked at the locals, and we looked at the feel and the vibe of the village itself. So those were the things that drew us here to this area, and it seems like some of the things we were attempting to get away from are circling back around on the island. And again, I've spent some time talking to folks, and realistically, with exception of, I think it was one... of, I think it was one gentleman that made a comment on BrunswickNews.com, "I really haven't run into anybody that is for this." Most people are against it, and they're really, really surprised that it's made it this far. Again, they feel that no one is listening to them. Now, from a current standpoint, as has been pointed out several different times, we know that zoning is the issue. Why we're having to conform, why we're having to conform to this footprint, the request for the setback changes, the narrowing of the buffers, the parking issues, all of these things, it just shouldn't happen. And it was just pointed out, it's, "They should have known. Fit the zoning. Don't make the zoning fit you." So again, I'm gonna quote from the Brunswick News, an article that was written by Taylor Cooper this past weekend, and he points out the obvious in regards to the village. "It's that character that the IPC has endeavored to guard since its inception." And the IPC, as noted a couple of other times, they do everything from colors and signage and awnings to exterior designs, and it's that standard which should continue to hold, hold firm in this particular case. So the decision is pretty simple for everybody, I do believe, I firmly believe. Rezoning is gonna open Pandora's box. It's gonna set a precedence, and it's going to establish a direction which we can never return. So all we're asking you to do is deny the zoning request, return it back to the IPC and even the developer, so that they can work within the zoning guidelines that are currently on the books. So with that, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Next speaker? Young lady? Did you want to come up? Would you read? Yeah, you can come up. First come, first served.
Good evening. I'm Miriam Lancaster. I live on St. Simons Island. I hope you had the opportunity to read the article in the Brunswick News last Saturday outlining the problems surrounding the county's use of the planned development zoning as identified by our own consultants who are working on the new zoning ordinance. As a best practice, planned development is for large projects with multiple uses. A great example of that is Seapalms. It contains commercial, recreational, single-family, and multifamily uses. No single zoning district would have allowed for the development of the various uses, and therefore, a PD was appropriate. The Seapalms PD contains over 300 acres. By contrast, this applicant has assembled a little over half an acre and proposes a single use. The proposed PD text, as you know, creates a micro-zoning district smack in the middle of a fully developed and thriving village mixed-use district. The current zoning was approved by the Board of Commissioners in November 2009 and provides for a number of appropriate uses. The applicant's proposed PD text retains everything they like about village mixed-use, including 19 other uses in addition to their proposed use, and changes the things that they don't like. Under Georgia law, going to a different issue than others have discussed, there are several criteria that you should address when you look at rezoning. One of them is the existing uses of the nearby property. All the surrounding properties are zoned village mixed-use and consist of a mix of retail, restaurant, and commercial businesses. The applicant's proposed use is an allowable use. There is no need for rezoning. Another consideration under Georgia law is the length of time the property has been vacant and undeveloped under the current zoning. In other words, do you need to change the zoning in order to make this property useful to the community? In this case, of course, you don't. The majority of this property was not vacant until the applicant removed the tenants. It was developed, it was occupied, and it contributed to the tax base and the overall economy of the island within the requirements of the village mixed-use development zoning. This applicant does not meet any criteria for rezoning, either under the Glen County ordinance or under Georgia law. Rezoning is a significant action, especially on the island. In fact, over the past several years, and I've been standing before you for about six years now, this Board of Commissioners has consistently stated that rezonings are not in the island's future, that the island is, quote, "built out," and that island residents don't have anything to worry about. Well, here we are, and all these folks are worried, and we've all told you why. This is the tip of the iceberg for the redevelopment of the island. So what you have to ask yourself is, do we continue to do what we've always done in the past, ignoring our best practices and the professional advice that we're paying for? Allow the applicant to create its own micro-zoning district by approving this PD? Or do we look at this project logically and advise the applicant to develop its project in accordance with the requirement of the village mixed-use zoning? It's your duty as commissioners to make good policy decisions on behalf of the citizens of Glen County, so that each decision supports your stated mission and goals, and our mission and our goals as citizens. This request is not good policy, and it should be denied.
Next speaker that wants to oppose? And we have enough time for one speaker.
My name is Wayne Whitfield. I'm a St. Simon resident. Dave must be my clone. He stole all of my speech. The only thing that I would want to point out, that I think has not necessarily been said, is in regard to the parking situation. If you look at these pretty pictures that they've drawn here, these trees actually look like they're sitting in what is parking spaces now. So we're gonna take away even more parking spaces. And then the other point that I would make, that people have not addressed, is that it's my understanding that when this is done, that it will be turned over to a nonprofit, which we're already hurting for tax money, and you're just gonna eliminate more tax money by giving this to a nonprofit. I'm not opposed to them having a museum. I think it could, under the right circumstances, be good, but the way it's set up, it just doesn't work. And then the other problem that I have is the visuals at the corner. Anybody trying to get onto Mallory now from that street knows that trying to see around the corner is hard enough as it is, and they want to build right up to the street? It's gonna be even worse. You know, so when you try to get out of there, the people who try to pull out into Mallory Street are gonna have to pull out into the middle of the street before they can make a turn. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
We have time for one more speaker, if you want to come up. We have two minutes left. Okay. Anyone else want to oppose and come up? Have a couple of minutes left. Okay, we're gonna close that side of the speaking, and we're gonna open up those that are for the application. And I think, Mr. Styland, did you want to come up first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith, known as Buddy, and I've lived on the island since 1992, 1993. And I want to thank all the people who spoke earlier. We heard some very elegant statements and very cogent statements, and I want to thank you for allowing three or four of the speakers to go over five minutes. One went seven minutes, another went six, et cetera. So that was good. You've been very patient, and I hope you'll be patient with me. As you know, I usually come up and read to you from a prepared text, but I thought I would wing it tonight, do something rather informal. I came to St. Simons for the first time in 1946, when I was about nine years old. I came with my dad. He had come back from the Navy, and he decided, instead of getting right down to business after the war, that he would take some time out, tell him off, and play golf. He was really tired out at the end of World War II. So he came here, he played golf. I carried a golf bag for him. I will never set foot on a golf course again. Anyway, I really liked St. Simons. It reminded me back then of the small town in Louisiana I came from. I grew up in a little town across Lake Ponchartrain from the city of Norlands, and it was a weekend and summer community. People had to drive all the way around the lake to get there. And in 1956, they built a causeway across the lake, and my hometown became sort of like St. Simons. And part of it became like Sea Island, a lot of gated communities and so on, with white flight, people fleeing from the city of Norlands. Anyway, I really liked the way St. Simons was, but now I come before you and say, "I've seen the light. I've seen how important this museum is." St. Simons has become, the village has become, an area of t-shirt shops and little jewelry shops and Gagar shops and so on. There's some nice businesses, but I've seen restaurants go under. And if Mr. Anshutz builds this museum here, I could see a real upscale crowd coming in. Maybe some of the shops downtown would turn into art galleries with wine tasting. Maybe we would have our first Fern bar. We don't have a Fern bar on St. Simons. I don't think we even have a Fern bar over in Brunswick. So what he is proposing could really be wonderful. Look, he already owns Sea Island, and maybe he can increase the Sea Island-ization of St. Simons. You know, we've got Sea Island Golf Course on St. Simons. We've got the Sea Island Shops on St. Simons. We've got the Sea Island Post Office on St. Simons. We've got all kinds of stuff here called Sea Island, and we ain't Sea Island. Well, maybe this can become Big Sea Island, and be gated, keep the hoi polloi off, keep the day trippers off. So that could be wonderful. That could be wonderful. Now, I was first opposed to this when I wrote to Mr. Bishop back in March with a list of questions about tax status, et cetera. I had a whole list of questions, and Mr. Bishop, the attorney for Mr. Anshutz, was so nice, he immediately wrote me a response, and all he said in his response was, "Thank you, and have a nice day." It wasn't that nice. "Have a nice day." He didn't answer any of my questions, and he didn't answer them for the IPC, but I don't care anymore. I've seen the light. I see how important it is, and I'm not worried anymore. I was worried or concerned, what would happen if Mr. Anshutz dies and his heirs and assigns to decide, they don't want an art museum, they don't want $100 million or half a billion dollars worth of irreplaceable art. They want to sell it. What would happen? What would become of that building? I'm not worried anymore. I've seen the light, and I know there's some bad rumors going around about my buying a new boat and a new sports car and so on. That's family money. That has nothing to do, I have not gotten anything from Mr. Bishop or Ms. Anshutz. Well, look, thank you for your time, and go ahead. Let's do it.
Some people can't take a joke. Well, thank you, Mr. Smith, for your support. Someone else want to come up and speak?
Good evening. My name is Jim Fraschay. I'm a resident of St. Simons, and I watched the village evolve and devolve for 44 years. A few weeks ago, I spoke at the IPC meeting and voiced my criticism of the proposed museum, but I'd like to say that after giving it more thought, spending some time in and around the village, talking with friends and others, that I am now 100% supportive of the proposed museum. I don't pretend to understand all the future ramifications of the PD rezoning application, so I'll just say that I hope the applicant and the county will arrive at a solution which results in the museum project being built and which addresses the fears of its detractors, where parking setbacks and the use of space is concerned. It's my understanding that the museum will be funded into perpetuity, which means that there should be no future application for other uses of the property because of financial necessity. This is huge for a museum and eliminates requirements for fundraising through events. This isn't to say that there should not be events, but this is a detail which needs to be worked out. Where events are concerned, a museum is a pillar of culture and offers the opportunity for the community to not just see art, but to interact with art, to learn about it, appreciate it, and even to engage in it. This requires different kinds of space. Please be flexible in this regard when it comes to a lecture room, a place for children to experiment with different arts media, and social space for adults to internalize and expand on the experience that the galleries will afford them. For those who do not care for the proposed architectural style and feel it will somehow debase the casual ambiance of the Pure Village, I'd like to point out the many examples of Greek Revival architecture in the community and the positive effect that building improvement has had on the village. The old casino, for example, was replaced by a new building, also now called the casino, and although they are put to different purposes, it has elevated the architectural quality standard of the village and added multiple activities and functions for the community. Simply rejecting the proposed museum building because it's supposedly not consistent with what is there relegates us to a village which will never be dynamic or reflect current needs and values. I'd prefer to look ahead rather than back. Finally, to those of you who reject the museum as a fantasy, vanity fantasy of a billionaire, I'd like to ask you, so what? What's the difference between Jeff Bezos's 10,000-year clock and the Anshutz Medical Campus at the University of Colorado Medical Center, where I'm from? The former is a $24 million toy, and the latter represents $120 million investment in the health and welfare of the American people. That's who this man is. The American Museum of Western Art in Denver is only traceable to Phil Anshutz in the byline, "The Anshutz Collection." It is not the Anshutz Museum of American Western Art. I personally don't really care what the Pure Village Museum is called, but it is an opportunity to bring world-class art, American art, to our community. We can only go to Savannah, to the Savannah Museum of Art, the Tell Fair Museums, the Savannah African Art Museum, or the SCAD Museum of Art, or we can go to Jacksonville, to the Museum of Contemporary Art, or the Kummer Museum of Art and Gardens. We're a world-class resort and hospitality community. Why don't we have a world-class art museum? And contrary to what has been reported in our local paper and elsewhere, the proposed museum collection includes American art representing a survey of historic periods and regions, including the Revolutionary War, Civil War, the expansion of the eastern U.S. into the American West, and omitted from local reporting, the Georgia Coast, St. Simons, and the local Gullah Gichi culture. Let's bring this fantastic resource to our community. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Scott McQuaid, and I'm here representing the Golden Isles Convention and Visitors Bureau. First, let me say, it is good to see you all again, particularly in person. I know these last few months have been difficult for the whole community, and I thank you for your leadership and service to us. As you may know, the CVB has operated a Welcome Center in the Pure Village for nearly two decades, and in 2015, we relocated our past center to our current location in partnership with Glen Visual Arts. We believe that the proposed museum will complement the existing village cultural and historic assets, such as the lighthouse, the local art gallery housed inside the Welcome Center. I will admit, similar to the past speaker, we are not an expert in planning and zoning matters. We're here to speak... We're here to speak specifically of the proposed use of the building. Each year, the attractions of heritage and arts and culture tourism attract hundreds of thousands of visitors, not only to our area but to the village. And in return, they provide a significant economic impact to our community and local businesses. We believe that providing more arts and culture opportunities for visitors and residents is not only good for the economy, but it's also good for our community. Arts and heritage tourism consists of about 35% of the total local tourism market. In other words, a lot of people come here for arts, culture, and heritage tourism. This is a vital part of our experience that we offer to our visitors. In a recent survey that the CVB conducted of nearly 5,000 visitors who were polled, almost 20% of visitors responded to a question for areas where we could improve, suggesting that greater variety of cultural assets and offerings is desired. This data can help explain why the community continues to expand our cultural and heritage offerings, such as the WWII Museum, the Harrington School, and the Jekyll Island Mosaic Project. Both this expansion and trend and the data support the notion that the Golden Isles is becoming better known as an arts, culture, and heritage hub. We believe that this is good for our community. Some of the most successful communities in the nation not only embrace the arts and culture sector, but they have also proven to be a great benefit to society as a whole. By expanding our arts and cultural offerings, we are strengthening our community's sense of place and encouraging further opportunities to expand to our area. I want to thank you for your consideration of the application and for your service to our community.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Scott Styler. I'm President and CEO of Sea Island Company. This is a project by our owner, Phil Anshutz. This is not a project by Sea Island Company. But based on the past commentary and what's been going on, I'm compelled to join in. We have prepared some slides and some other renderings and images of not only, thank you, Stephanie, not only what this project will look like, but also a little bit about the character of the village. And I'm going to end with a little bit about Phil Anshutz, because I think many in this audience need to understand the man who wants to do this. Our opponents, the opponents to this museum, have said it's incompatible with the architectural integrity of the village, or it has the wrong color, or the building is too big. I think when you see these renderings, and I'm quite happy to make these renderings available to the public, when you see these renderings, you realize that size and scale is a little better understood in the kind of renderings that exist here. How do I advance this, Stephanie? Just push? Where am I going? If you mind just a second. Thank you so much. These are a couple of renderings that allow you to kind of understand what's happening from a scale perspective. Yes, these are renderings. But it really kind of takes this and puts the notion of architectural integrity and scale into perspective and so on. These are computer-generated generated renderings. Notice the setback and the pullback seating areas and areas where the building is not fully fronting the sidewalk, and there is some distance, which is far lacking on Mallory Street. This is a view looking southward through the wonders of animation in terms of what's happening. But it does provide you a sense of scale and understanding of what really can happen. Next one. And this is a little bit of a close-up, looking north, at how the sit-back seating areas and landscape will get there in being able to do that. Next slide. Our site plan, certainly Commissioners, as you know, we take landscape seriously and landscape design seriously, and we will do the same here within a very, very extensive site plan and a tremendous amount, about 25% of the site preserved for open space. This is tougher to see, but this is the village. And my intention here, if you want to flip to the next one, Stephanie, is to just provide everybody a reminder of the varying different mix of styles, colors, facades, architecture, everything in the village. You can just flip through the rest of these. These are just examples and images of what exists at the village. When you talk about architectural style and the eclectic nature of the village, you can't have it both ways. We would argue that the museum is as eclectic and architecturally significant as any building or more in the village today. So we don't believe in any way, shape, or form that we're violating the building setback. If you go back one more. These are the kiosks. This is an amalgamation of the kiosk pictures. This is what exists today. If you want to call those eclectic, you may. But you need to consider our museum building and the building that Mr. Anshutz wants to build the same way. If you would, please. Thank you so much. Parking issues were brought up. Jonathan Roberts will speak later about parking. But simply stated, this museum will be a less intensive parking use than the existing properties that are on the property now. The kiosk properties, the 15 or so kiosks, the commercial building that exists, and the house that's there. This museum will not be the drain on parking that the audience is talking about and will be far less intensive a use as there. We've talked about setback. I've had a lot of chance to read and hear about a museum disguised as something else. This is a museum, and only a museum. And this is a museum where we took the time to go through a very detailed PD change, where we sat side by side with staff to make sure we understood exactly what wanted to go on there from a site plan perspective, and knowing that that site plan goes right into the PD text. And any change to that has to come back through committee. There is no precedent to be set here. We don't need to host a multitude of events there. I can assure you, and especially today, I've got plenty of event space at the cloister and the lodge to be able to host any event that we're looking for and looking to host at this point in time. As Mr. Frochey mentioned, there's been a lot of talk about it being a Western art museum. He was dead-on in terms of what the uses of this will be. There is a fabulous Western art museum in Denver. It's not going to be here on St. Simons. Mr. Smith had asked before, and I am going to answer your question, about whether this will be a white elephant. What happens if Mr. Anshutz passes away? And he's going to live forever, by the way. Mr. Anshutz passes away, and his family doesn't want to do this. You know what? It doesn't matter. This is going to be owned by the Anshutz Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) corporation. The last reporting assets, the 2018 tax return that anybody can look up in the public, was $1.3 billion. I'm pretty sure that from a guaranteed perspective, we've got a really good guarantor to ensure that the museum will outlast any other business that exists on St. Simons in terms of what we're doing. Questions have been raised about taxes. Will the museum, you know, will we pay taxes? The Anshutz Foundation is going to follow the law. Whatever the law says is what will happen from that perspective. So last year, in 2019, the taxes paid on these collective parcels was $9,000, a little bit under $9,000, just as a point of reference. Last year, Anshutz entities paid Glen County over $2 million in property taxes. The Sea Island Company, of which Mr. Anshutz now owns, has contributed, through a 2016 study, nearly $700 million in economic output to this county, this county only. In 2016, they paid $22 million in total taxes to this county, and I'm certain that number was higher in 2019. And they were responsible for one of every six jobs in this county. We're not going anywhere, and neither is this museum. There's been talk about this being a fraud, or it's a wolf in sheep's clothing, and it's going to become something, a new use. We've been cited of all the other uses in this PD text, and perhaps we're starting with a museum and going to something else. I can assure you, and Stephanie can assure you, that the PD text doesn't allow it. The site plan is part and parcel of the PD text. The only reason that this is a PD is because museum is not specifically defined and legally defined as a permitted use in the current village mixed-use zoning code. An art gallery is not a museum. There will be no art for sale in this museum. This will be display-only for educational purposes. There will be wonderful opportunities for education and culture, and we hope that it will be used by all of the local schools in the community. There's been talk about the community being opposed to this. You know, I was aware that there was a gathering of concerned citizens last week that gathered together, and we sent somebody there, and there were 30 people there. As far as I know, Glen County has over 80,000 residents. These are the same people that are complaining. This isn't a wave of discontent and a wave of concern among the entire community. This is a small group, although vocal and clearly spirited, a small group of folks who are opposed to this. The last thing that I'd like to talk about is Mr. Anshutz himself. This has ultimately become a referendum on Mr. Anshutz. Let me give you a little bit of background. He was part of the group that saved Sea Island when it came out of bankruptcy in 2010. And in 2016, he consolidated the interests of his three other partners, who are all short-term focused, and spent hundreds of millions of dollars in doing so. Then what did he do? He turned around and he put the company into a 100-year trust for the benefit of generations of his family. I know that our 1,600 team members, our 1,800 members, and our hundreds of thousands of guests appreciate what he did. Since his acquisition, he's spent over $100 million of improvements to Sea Island. When Dollar General was in front of this board and the Island Planning Commission, and there was a tremendous community uproar, Phil Anshutz stepped in and put up the money to buy Dollar General and challenged this community to raise over $8 million for the land trust to buy a Dollar General site, the Mildred Hue Museum across the way, and preserve other parcels that exist. A couple of years ago or so, the owners of Frederica, the Hazinga family, put the company up for sale, the entirety of Frederica up for sale. They also put out a development plan that showed 700 homes on the available land, remaining land to be developed. Phil Anshutz stepped up and bought the remaining land at Frederica. And he has no interest in developing 700 homes. He did that to preserve the character of St. Simons. There are many people in this audience who have the means to do some of those things. None of them stepped up. Phil Anshutz was the only one that stepped up to do that. We've given, through the Anshutz Foundation and through Sea Island Company, millions of dollars to local charities. Not hundreds of dollars, not $1,000, millions of dollars to local charities. Now we're coming upon a time where he wants to give something else back to this community. He wants to build a museum. He wants to build a museum in the village. He doesn't want to build it in Brunswick. He doesn't want to build it anywhere else. He wants to build it in the village on this site. He bought the parcels to want to build a museum. He's been very intentional about what he's been doing. And now he wants to do this for public benefit. I understand the concerns about precedent. I don't buy them. This is a public use. This is going to be a public benefit. We're not talking about an entrepreneur or a for-profit enterprise trying to wipe out half a block in the village for their own private profit. This is a gift to the community. We should treat it as such. I can tell you, I've worked for Phil Anshutz for almost 10 years, and directly for him for four. I've never met a more humble, honorable, family man. The worst thing we can do as a community right now is turn our back on him. Thank you very much.
Anyone else want to come up and speak in favor? Anyone else want to come up and speak? Yes, ma'am. Come up and state your name for the record.
My name is Robie Frochey. And I just want to ask those of you here tonight who are so opposed to this museum, please open your minds. Open your minds and elevate your minds and be glad that we have an opportunity to have such a world-class museum on our little island. Thank you.
Anyone else want to come up and speak in favor? Last call. Anyone else want to come up and speak in favor? Okay, I'm going to close the floor, close the public hearing, turn it over to the Commissioners. Anyone got any questions? Need staff come up? Need anyone to come up and answer any questions? Commissioner Coleman?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few comments that I'd like to make. I was born and raised here in Glen County. The old hospital on the south end of town was, first of all, these eyes saw. And I've always looked at St. Simons as really nothing that special. I mean, it was the land on the other side of the rivers. Used to hitchhike over there when I was a kid. Remember walking across the toll booths, watching people stop and drop a quarter or give a quarter to the tolltaker there? And just, it was a neat place to go. It was a neat place simply because of its simplicity. I appreciate the integrity, the character, the simplicity, the history, and the natural landscape of St. Simons Island. It's an extension of Brunswick, Glen County, it's part of Glen County. And I just feel like that what it has become as we know it today is the efforts of thousands of citizens and folks that have lived their entire lives here and brought forth the history of Sea Island and golf courses and all the sports events that have come here. And even with the annual Davis Love Tournament we have over at Sea Island, it's still, it's just a neat place to come to. I don't think there's a tour pro out there that'll tell you any different. It's not the big city. It's just the unique beauty of the area. To me, this change, it'd be like giving the Pure Village a heart transplant when the one that's already there works just fine. And my mind sees this museum as a morgue in the middle of a county fair. It just don't fit. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond. Mr. Coleman, as someone who grew up on St. Simons and Glen County, just as you, I was fortunate enough to grow up in the Pure Village area off of Butler Avenue, Floyd Street. Matter of fact, grew up in the house that my dad did when he grew up here in the '40s. Matter of fact, my grandfather built the two-story building where Raptors is right now. So as we talk about history, we all have a piece of history here in the Golden Isles, and we all perceive it a certain way. I do- I do agree with you that it is a special place. But in recent years, I think that as much as we want to continue to say it's special, there's been things that have happened in the village that make you question, are we going down the right way? For example, a year ago, we had a shooting there in the evening one night where a person was shot and killed. Just recently, in the last few weeks, we've had a lot of issues with drunken vagrants in the kiosks kind of setting up camp there overnight. So I say all that to say this, that when you have an opportunity to bring an asset such as this into the village, and to bring it to the folks of this community, and bring a facelift to the village that's being done by a gentleman who has invested a lot in our community, I don't know how we can say that we would say no to it. And it's my opinion that it's a great building, it's going to be a great fit into the village. I think it's going to be a catalyst for great things, where people can come and enjoy art, and it's going to be an attraction for tourists to come here. And you know, a lot of people have said, well, many of the folks that wear the t-shirts and the flip-flops probably won't go in there, and that's maybe the case, but the other six months out of the year, when it's cooler weather, when we have folks that aren't necessarily coming here for the beach, this is going to be a destination for them. It's going to be an attraction to bring more tourism into our community and bring more dollars into our community. So I appreciate your thoughts on the history of St. Simons and the history of the Golden Isles, but I would encourage you that not everyone thinks that this is a bad thing. I think it's a real good thing, and I grew up here.
Any other commissioner want to weigh in?
Sure, I'll make a few comments. So I was actually present at the IPC meeting for at least an hour and a half the other night. Myself, like all the other commissioners up here, I've received an incredible number of phone calls and hundreds of emails on this issue. In fact, yesterday afternoon alone, I received over 50 from 2:00 on today, probably an equal number. Many of these have come from close friends or from acquaintances that I respect greatly. And these calls and emails came down on both sides of the issue. Some were in favor and some opposed. So either way I come down on this issue, I'm bound to disappoint both friends and individuals I respect greatly. And if I disappoint, I apologize in advance. Fortunately, the team assembled by Mr. Antschutz was able to produce artistic renderings of the project and has displayed these this evening, both on easels and on the video screens. I believe that these renderings have dispelled many of the concerns about the size disproportion, the color concerns, and setback issues. I believe what we see fits that corner quite well and highlights buildings immediately around it. For example, I wasn't aware that right across the street Barbara Jean's was a two-story building, but now I see it, and it's a beautiful building. In fact, I see no harm to something new that will be educationally and culturally impactful on the village. We will always have our t-shirt shops, our ice cream and frozen yogurt, our vintage stores selling both vintage clothes and vintage records. These are not going to go away. In fact, this museum will be additive and not reductive to the ambiance and the character of the village. And I go further to the point that Commissioner O'Quinn was making, and as probably the only one in the room that's actually done a heart transplant, I'm here to tell you, this is not a heart transplant. This truly is, as Commissioner O'Quinn said, a much-needed facelift in an older individual with sagging skin. I support this effort. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I support the PD text change as well. You know, do I wish this museum were coming to the mainland? You bet. But I don't have that power. This is up to the person that owns the property, and he's selected the property where he wants it to go. The thing that I have absolutely no doubt about is the team, beginning with the design team, the engineering team, the architectural team, down to the painters and then the plumbers and the landscape architects are going to be second to none. And I believe that this building is going to be second to none. And I think it's going to be a tremendous asset for the village. I think it's going to be a tremendous asset for St. Simons and for this community. And so I just, from the impassioned statement by Mr. Stylen, I think this is Mr. Antschutz's legacy, one of them. And I think that this thing is going to be done extraordinarily well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as someone who did not grow up on the island, but grew up in Brunswick, and who have a deep concern for the island and for different reasons, because my folk were over there a long time before many other people, and it's very few black folks on the island now. So I often wonder, when these issues come up, how did those people feel about the change? Did they want to leave off the island? Did they feel like it was getting overcrowded? I doubt if their concerns were even thought of. I listened to a lot of people talk about the lifestyle over there, and from my understanding, it's pretty good. But I see it differently than many of you, because I understand the history of that island. And so I have to vet things through that. Now, this man that owned Sea Island, I heard nothing but good things about him when he bought out the partners. I talked to a lot of people, but when he decided to do this, it was like he was the devil himself. And I'm just telling you, I don't respond well to that, because I think that's unfair. He simply wants to do an art museum. Yes, as Commissioner Bronson said, we would love to have it on the mainland, and I encourage him to do another one. But I just don't see how this is going to really change the lifestyle of the people that live over there. Not to the point of how my people's lifestyle was changed, because they were forced off of the island. You may not agree with that, you may not believe it, but it's true. So I look at this a little differently. And if somebody wants to bring something like this here to enhance the community, I can't help but to support it.
Mr. Chairman, I've sat here and listened tonight, and compelling arguments both sides. My question comes with the PD text. I want to, I don't know that you're going to be applauding in just a second, but my question with the PD text is, how are we going to ensure that this does not start a continuation of PD text requests? Mr. Stylen made a very good point, that this is a museum. It is not for sale merchandise, it's not. So most people that would want to come in and move through the island would want to do so as a profit venture. But I need assurance that this PD text is not going to become a precedent for future change. Ms. Leaf, can you address that for me? Tell me why, because I hear the, tell me why a future rezon for PD text would be denied.
Why a future one to this site or elsewhere in the village?
No, not to this site, for similar sites up and down Mallory.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, if it meets the criteria to apply for a PD, I mean, basically, as others have said, I mean, a PD is designed to accommodate for unique circumstances, whether it's design changes, or whether it's uses, or you know, whatever is part of the project, you can't be accommodated by conventional or traditional zoning, then a PD would be the right fit. So it's hard to say down the line, but definitely, if there's another project that comes forward that has unique attributes that can't be accomplished by conventional zoning, I mean, they may look at doing a PD. So I can't guarantee that there won't be any future PD applications in that area. It could possibly happen.
So with that, I know community development is talking about trying to do away with PD texts and has recommended in the past, we don't do them. Why is it necessary for this property to be a PD text? Why can't they accomplish? Because I have seen what they're presenting. You trust their architectural design, you trust their landscape design, and anything that Sea Island does or is associated with is, you know, very appropriate. I was impressed. I don't know if anybody changed their mind or not. Mine's changed about three times while we were sitting here this. But to look at that, I am not opposed to the museum. I'm not opposed to the color of the museum. I'm not opposed to the land use. I'm not opposed to anything they presented here tonight, but I still have the question of the PD text. Is it absolutely necessary that this PD text be adopted to be able to facilitate what it is they want to do?
So there are two options, however, the PD, we felt as staff and the applicants looked at it this way, was really the best option for what they were looking to do for this site. So the first point that they have talked about, and I talked about as well, is the use. So staff believes an art museum can fall under the art gallery use that's listed in the VMU. However, there are a variety of interpretations of an art museum and art gallery, and I know the applicants, you know, particularly, you know, owners being in the, you know, having other museum entities as well, I mean, they did not feel comfortable that an art gallery sufficiently also defined an art museum. So, you know, prior to having their investment in this kind of a project, they wanted to be absolutely sure that an art museum specifically was allowed. And so the only way that they would have been able to add a use is to either apply for a PD or apply for another zoning district. Other zoning districts probably would not be a great fit in the village. It'd be, you know, highway commercial or a higher intensity commercial zoning that would not be the best fit, because you would not be able to include some of the other modifications that this PD includes. So that was the primary reason, was to add a use. They had to either do PD or another zoning district. It could not be done in VMU. The other ones are on the screen. So under parking, they could apply for variance that would go in front of the Board of Appeals to accomplish the same effect with the parking variance. So however, you know, what we look at for Board of Appeals variances is, is there a hardship? Is this self-imposed? So we would need to analyze, you know, all the different standards and variances, and the Board of Appeals would be reviewing that as well. The buffer could be accomplished in the site plan under the VMU, so they would come through with the site plan as VMU, and they could request from the IPC a modification to the buffers. So the buffer could be accomplished under the current zoning. The vision clearance at street intersections, that would also be a variance. And so what we all looked at was, you know, now they're looking at two variances that would have to go to the Board of Appeals, plus you had this issue with whether the use truly was allowed or not, and coupled with that, it just made sense to go the PD route instead of doing VMU and then also applying for these series of variances and modifications. So that's basically how this ended up in this type of PD option.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or any other discussion before we go to, before we close comments and see if we can get a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve MZ 4324 pursuant to the approved PD text, including the site plan and tree plan as presented to the IPC on 21 July 2020.
I'm sorry, Commissioners, that is, that should be ZM 4299. My apologies.
All right. ZM 4299. Right, right. I just, I read it, and just as it's up there, and she said it's misprinted up there, and number two is ZM 4299. It's, isn't that right, what you're saying? Help me, Stephanie.
Sure. Yeah, that's what I just wanted to clarify. So number two is as presented, which means it is what you have in your packet that includes all the uses.
Right.
So I understand that is what you intend, is to include all the uses in the PD text.
But is the number incorrect up there?
Number two is, yes, that is correct. It should be ZM 4299.
Okay, so just as I read it, except for...
Correct.
You printed it incorrectly. It should be ZM 4299 pursuant to the approved PD text, including the site plan and tree plan as presented to the IPC, 21 July 2020.
Commissioners have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one more comment here. Gentlemen, some of the things I touched on right there, pretty simple Simon, and the pictures that have been provided for us here kind of speak for themselves. It doesn't take rocket science to figure out that, to me, this very first page right here, the building stands out like this courthouse does in the middle of this city block. You gentlemen, don't fool yourself. You've got some people out here that put you in these chairs to take care of their business and do the right thing, and changing, the drastic change that you are proposing here is just, it's just up in the clouds to me. I just don't understand why anybody would want to make such a drastic change in such a very simple setting that right now everybody loves. Everybody comes down here from all over the country to see this simple setting. That's why we've got traffic problems. That's why we've got land that has gotten to the point where only a few folks can afford it. It's just an ideal spot, if you will. It's not like Miami Beach, it's not like Daytona, it's not like any of your other gulf cities or anything like that. It's just plain and simple. And I want you guys to understand, you're getting ready to change that big time. And I really feel for the people that have showed up here tonight, the cemetery that has not been able to come and possibly watching on TV, and that these folks are depending on y'all to do the right thing, and I just don't believe, with the show of hands that we're looking at here right now, they believe you're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Okay, Commissioners, I call the vote. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Those against, same. Okay, it was 6-4, one against. Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute break and let the room clear, and if others want to come in.
And if others want to come in. Ah, just, we're going to get started. I'll find some more Commissioners. Well, if he's in the bathroom, he can hear us. We're going to move on to item three. ZM 4324, Hamilton Road Storage Rezon. Consider a request for an amendment to the Island Medical Park Plan Development District, case number ZM 2263, to add rental storage facility as a permitted use and change other uses to special uses for property located at 371 and 391 Hamilton Road. The applicant proposes a new rental storage facility building. Jonathan Roberts, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for South Leeward Bluff LLC, owner. Parcel ID 04-12017 and 04-12018, Victory Storage Company, applicant. Steffi, if you want to present it?
Thank you. This is ZM 4324, Hamilton Road Storage Rezon. This is a new storage facility. So, this is the property located off of Hamilton Road on St. Simons. And currently, the project is part of the Island Medical Park Plan Development District. And what they are looking to do is to add a rental storage facility as a permitted use in the list of allowed uses. And they also would like to have all the other uses that are in this Island Medical Park PD for the property become special uses. So, any additional uses aside from rental storage would need to come back through the county to get a special use permit. So, the property that is currently part of the Island Medical Park PD, which was done in 2011, does allow medical offices, professional governmental uses, as well as pharmacies, restaurants, and flower shops. Basically, different uses that would be in supporting medical facilities there. And they also allow a residential on the second level of a building. However, as I mentioned, all of those additional uses would only be special uses under this new PD. So, the applicant is proposing to do a 72,089 square foot building. And this is the comprehensive plan. It does show it as medium-density residential. And of course, the Island Medical Park was a commercial PD, so the existing zoning was already a commercial use, and it's maintaining itself as a commercial use. So, at this point, staff didn't recommend that they needed to specifically do a future land use map amendment for this, because the zoning is already a commercial zoning. So, this is their site plan for the project. As you can see, they have two entrances. The primary entrance is off of Hamilton Road. They also have a secondary access that would be off of Wellness Way. There will not be any outside storage of any kind of vehicles or any kind of storage outside. Everything is within the interior climate-controlled storage facility. They do, they included a lighting plan. And these are their conceptual elevations of the building. And because this PD is under three acres, similar to the last PD, they do require that a site plan is approved as part of the PD. And this is the color rendering of the project. This is showing from Hamilton Road. So, the planning commission, Island's Planning Commission, held a public hearing on July 21st, and they did unanimously, 7-0, recommend approval of the reason application as presented. And these are your possible actions. The first one is to approve. So, what the Island's Planning Commission did was, during the site plan review, they had a couple revisions to the site plan, such as a dumpster would not be required. They do plan to have rollout carts. And then, they also stated they want the buffer to be retained on the site. So, the first motion includes those revisions by the planning commission, and the applicants are in favor of those. So, there are no issues with the applicant on those conditions. And then, number two would be as presented, so that would not include the dumpster and buffer conditions. And then, your third option would be to approve the zoning decision with further modifications. You could also continue the hearing, remand the application, or deny the zoning decision. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant team is here this evening as well.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions for Steffi?
So, remind me, I was distracted for a minute. The IPC was unanimous in approving this?
That is correct.
With the changes that they requested to be made?
Yes, yeah, the number one option.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion and certainly the vote. Relatives that are involved in this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunson. Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's no other questions, no other comments from the Commissioners, we will open the public hearing, and we'll ask for anyone that is opposed to the application to come up and state your name at the podium for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith again. Yes, I am very opposed to this. This is, after all, a medical facility PD text. And we're entering a period where we do not know how much, how many medical facilities we're going to need in the near future. We don't know what's going to happen with this COVID pandemic. We don't know whether there will be a vaccine, et cetera, et cetera. This may be with us for a long time, and we do not yet know, and I hope, and I believe Dr. Murphy understands this, we do not know what the long-range effect will be. I don't even know whether I have been infected and recovered, et cetera, or will ever recover. And I'm turning 83 this year. So, I think it is foolish and premature to allow what is being proposed here. And I implore you to go back and look at the preamble to our zoning ordinance, which talks about premature development. So, this land was set aside for medical facilities, to support medical facilities, though I admit it includes such things as a flower shop, which is supported in some ways. Now, here we have a three-story building, or is it four stories? I've forgotten already, with more than 400 little storage rooms, air-conditioned. Now, the only possible medical usage would be to crank down the air conditioning really low and store bodies, turn it into a mausoleum, turn it into a crypt. And I'm being serious. I'm not being sarcastic. I'm being serious. I think it would be shameful to allow this. So, I do not know, and I do not believe you know, and I do not believe the applicants have demonstrated that there is a serious demand and need for more storage on St. Simons, close to the causeway. Now, are the new condos that are being built, the new apartments and timeshares that are being built on the island, so small, so lacking in storage, that people who live on St. Simons are going to need more room for their junk? I'm sorry. This really bothers me. And by the way, I do not appreciate that you allowed Scott Stylin to have more than 10 minutes, 11 or 12 minutes. What he said was good. What he said was cogent. What he said was important. But he should not have been allowed at a public hearing to say it for more than 10 minutes. It's the kind of stuff that should have been presented to you as part of the presentation. So, thank you for bearing with me on that digression. And good night.
Mr. Smith, I'll take that under advisement for the next time we do a museum. Next person wants to oppose, speak in opposition. Just step up to the podium and state your name. Anyone else want to oppose? Okay, we'll go to those that are in favor. If you're in favor and want to speak up, come up to the podium and state your name, please.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Jonathan Roberts, and I'm the engineer on the project. And I'll say that the developers have been very proactive advising their neighbors what they plan to do. For six months, they've met with every neighbor and stakeholder in the area, Eppworth, the hospital, Mariners Landing residents. They've been very proactive to make sure that they understand exactly what's proposed. They've gone to an elite level of detail for a storage facility, and they've done a comprehensive traffic study to make sure that it's not going to hurt the traffic flow on the road. And what we found is actually about half as much traffic as a potential medical use on the same property. So, we'd be happy to answer more questions during the Q and A, but I'm certainly in favor of the project.
Mr. Roberts, while you're up, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions. Is this, does anyone come back? Or is this the time I need to do this? Can?
Sure, sure.
Okay. This indeed is a pretty close picture of what it's going to look like?
It sure is.
Okay. I just got a couple of questions on the construction there. You've got a three-story storage building. Is that correct?
That's right.
And then, how would people get stuff up and down? What, you got elevators, lifts?
There are elevators, and the developers here, the owners are here that can answer the detailed questions of the operation. They operate several of these, and they've got very good understanding of the operation. But that's, as I understand it, it's elevators inside the building.
Okay, well, I mean, I would assume those would be something along commercial-type, construction-type elevators. I mean, not your regular old Otis that you get in Hilton and go up and down in. I mean, it'd be?
I can't speak to that, but I would assume so.
Okay. Other question is, these are all going to be climate-controlled, as I believe Mr. Smith was referring to there a while ago. I'm assuming that they were all, that all of them are going to be the same?
The developers will have to speak to that question.
Okay. The reason I ask, we have other storage areas. Of course, they have climate control. They have parked under a shed out in a fenced area. They've got, you know, they've got different areas. I was just wondering if what we see here is the total package. And then, my third question would be, how many other storage facilities do we have on St. Simons?
So, the owners can speak to those questions, but it's my understanding that they will be all air-conditioned units, interior only. They have another unit behind Sal's Pizza that's fully occupied. I think they have a very good handle on the demand for St. Simons, and they could also elaborate more on that one.
Yeah, because, I mean, I don't recall seeing another one or hearing another one be advertised over there. I mean, that might be just me, but I was just, that's what I was wondering, if indeed there was adequate over there.
Yeah, they actually have one right behind that area of Sylvan Lane that's a little bit smaller than this, but you're right. Most people don't even know it's there. It creates such little traffic.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else want to come up and speak in favor of the application?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I'm Kirk Watson, one of the developers. Happy to answer any of those questions that you had. Yes, sir, we do, we use freight elevators. Sometimes they are built by Otis, but yes, it's a larger elevator. Essentially, what we do is we restrict all access in and out of the building to a keypad-operated door. So you won't see any storage units, you won't see any roll-up doors, which are the typical drive-up style, and all the loading and unloading is done internally on platform trucks or, you know, dollys to try to access the units.
I just think, I think this is the first time I've ever seen a more than one-story storage unit, and I was just kind of, I mean, this must be something kind of...
We operate several of these type facilities. We also have some other locations where you have a mixture of drive-up units, non-climate-controlled units, as well as the interior all-climate. This model is the one that we have on St. Simons, on Sylvan Drive and Center Street as well, and we do know there's a demand there.
Well, I mean, I just thought it was kind of unique to know that you do build multi-story storage units, and you don't see, of course, the ones I picture are the single-story, and they're spread out in acres and acres of land. This apparently takes up very little space for the storage, the number of storage units that it provides.
It does, and considering the cost of land on St. Simons, we can't afford acres and acres, so we have to go up, and it seems to work.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else want to speak? Last call. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ZM 4324 pursuant to pursued PD text, including the site plan, tree plan as revised by the IPC on 21 July, dumpster not being required, and the buffer being retained.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I called a motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. We have one extension or excuse, so thank you all, and congratulations to the applicant. Okay. Item four, CUP 4381, 106 East 18th Street. Consider a request for a conditional use permit for the installation of an underground stormwater storage system, landscaping, retaining walls, and steps seaward of the development setback line established by the Board of Commissioners pursuant to zoning ordinance section 727, Beach and Dune Protection District. Property is located at 106 East 18th Street, Sea Island, and Zone R12, R9, and Beach and Dune Protection District. Parcel ID 05-00792, Daniel H. Buchi, agent for Kenneth W. Low, or the Kenneth W. Low Revocable Trust, owner and applicant. Okay, Steffi?
Thank you. This is CUP 4381, 106 East 18th Street on Sea Island, and this is the property on Sea Island where the star is located. This is 18th Street. So under section 727 of the zoning ordinance, our Beach and Dune Protection District, the applicant is applying for a conditional use permit for the installation of underground stormwater storage system, landscaping, retaining walls, and steps seaward of the development setback line. And the development setback line was established by the Board of Commissioners on June 4, 2020. And that setback line is 40 feet landward of the toe of the most landward stable dune. And just for reference, the Department of Natural Resources, their setback line is 25 feet landward of the stable dune, and the county is more restricted at 40 feet. So the proposed work falls under, there's several elements that can be placed in the setback according to section 727. So under boardwalks, fences, storm drain systems, and native landscaping are all items that can be placed within the setback with a conditional use permit. And the proposed product does show lawn and plants within the area, and it does have to be native species, and so they have verified that this will be native species. So this is the survey of the property. So here is the beach on this side, and here is Gascoigne or 18th Street, right here. And the house is currently being remodeled, and they are planning to do a pool and spa area. This is all landward of the 40-foot line, and then basically what they're having is lawn and landscaping, some steps and retaining wall that's going to be seaward. So this just shows where the line falls. So in green, dark green, this is the 40-foot setback, so really right at the edge of where their pool is located, so everything from this point seaward. And then just for reference, the Georgia DNR Shore Protection Act line is in blue. There's just a little more details on some of the items on their plan. There's some photos of the sites. This is the house being currently remodeled. And then just looking north from the subject property to showing, you know, where the other properties encroach or go into the setback. And this property does have a little more going seaward than some of the other properties, but historically, a lot of the land that they now own was owned by Sea Island, so some of the homes had never developed because they did not own the land. So that's why you see some differential between where people are developing along this stretch. So just for reference, these are some photos that the applicant submitted, just historical of where the, so this is the property that you can see kind of outlined here from 2018 and 2017. And so you can see historically, they did have some lawn going further out, and this is where there was the seawall, and now it is covered with sand after Sea Island did their renourishment. So the Planning Commission did consider this on July 21. It was a 5-2 vote. Commissioners Kate and Ragstall were opposed, but the IPC did vote in favor recommending to the Board of Commissioners approval of the permit as presented. And these are your possible motions, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant's team is here as well.
Steffi, thank you. Commissioners, if you have any questions of Steffi?
Yeah, tell me about this underground stormwater storage. That's not something we see a lot of or hear a lot of. I know there's a big problem with stormwater runoff over on Sea Island, particularly on the ocean side and the way the streets are sort of canted that prevents that water. How much retention are we talking about here? And I assume it's going to be a tank underground as opposed to a retention pond, as we usually hear about?
Correct, it is underground detention, and they have stated this will improve the situation, the stormwater situation in this area. But for any details, I defer to either Mr. Bishop or Mr. Roberts on that, or...
Gentlemen, my name is Jim Bishop, and I represent the applicants, Ken and Julia Low. Dan Bucy is the environmental consultant, and Jonathan Roberts, the engineer, and he can explain. Jonathan, if you could come on up here and explain the underwater retention, please.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the underground detention system, it's basically, it's a network of gravel and half-pipes that are perforated, and it just gives the same effect as an above-ground detention pond, but it's buried and out of sight and out of mind, but it does provide the same volume during the storm that a detention pond would provide.
And this property is so close to the sea with the, you know, being four, five, six feet above sea level, does that water eventually percolate away somehow?
Yeah, a couple of big requirements to make sure a system like this would work. First is to make sure that the water table is low enough, and we've confirmed that here. And then also, we get an infiltration test to see how fast the water will percolate into the ground, and that works very well. But in addition, recently, Sea Island has actually put a mechanical pump at the end of the street, so that provides even an additional amount of discharge capability that pumps the water all the way over to the marsh.
So how's that, that mechanical pump? Is it going to be piped underneath the road?
It's piped down the road to a storm drain that drains out to the marsh, but that's separate, that's a totally separate thing. This has enough volume to take care of the development forelow.
Is this, you know, with stormwater being such a problem over there, particularly on the seaside, is this going to be a future requirement, do you think, over there?
You know, it's very common that this happens, and one reason that this doesn't typically come before you is that the location of this setback has got a new point from which it's measured from. Now that the renourishment has occurred, the 40 feet used to not encroach as far into the lots as it does now that the beach has been renourished. So, but yeah, this could be a very routine thing that you see come before you, because we've done, we've probably done 20 of these in the last couple of years on Sea Island.
Thanks.
Mr. Roberts, Commissioner Murphy, you were asking about this, what's the name of the hotel that's right across the street from Crab Daddy's?
That's Hotel Simone, formerly Hotel Pilar.
They've got one.
Yeah, I remember that. I was just going to say, that's the only other one I can think of. We discussed that at the time. I was asking you how water was ever going to drain upward, because gravity usually doesn't allow water to flow uphill.
Yeah, these systems really work well if it's sandy and the water will soak into the ground.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, Commissioners, if there's no more questions, we're going to go to the public hearing. I look in the public hearing for those that are opposed to the application, if you'll step up to the podium. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone in favor that wants to step up to the podium and speak? Anyone in favor? Hearing none, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, approve the conditional use permit as presented.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, I will call the motion. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that is unanimous. Mr. Attorney, have you got any other matters for the next session?
No other items.
If Commissioners heard everything they needed to hear in the first one, if not, we can go into it again if you want to.
My brain won't absorb anymore, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've got a motion to adjourn. Got a motion to adjourn?